It is 6:30. I'll call a meeting to order. On agenda amendments, eliminating number seven, that would be the hot weather annex. Stephanie will not be able to be here tonight. You also note that you got a revised pay orders too. The minute, September 19th, I need a motion and to discuss.
I'll make a motion. A motion to discuss?
One second.
Any questions, anything that needs to be revised, looked at, or? Hearing none, I'll move the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pay orders. For October 4th currently showing at 27,951 and 40 cents. I need a motion in a second to discuss the pay orders.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Anything that looks out of place, needs to be replaced? Hearing none, I'll move the motion for 27,951 and 40 cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Honorable mentions for the week, Sandy and Alan Hochberg for donations, both money and food to the food show. And also to the survivors. That was the group that performed at the revised town hall concert that Sandy arranges. I don't see Phil as a yet, so we'll hold off.
Turn your light over here.
Oh.
You're behind the lamp. I try to stay out of trouble that way.
Okay, I'll let you go first here.
All right. I didn't get back this afternoon to see if they had their trucks running or not, but they had two trucks and a backhoe down this morning. I think they're just battery issues. So they were working on them when I was down there earlier with Bruce. I didn't get back this afternoon to check on them, see how they were making out. One question I do have, I took Bruce down and looked at it today. The driveway which used to be Mrs. Brown's across from Family Dollar. Ronnie owns that now, Shaw, and he approached me about fixing the culvert alignment and the washout so he can widen that driveway some. The washout issue is a town issue. It's something that keeps washing in. There's a section approximately 20 feet between culverts that is where Cumberland Farms left off and the state made them put the culvert in, the 30-inch culvert, to come out of their yard. And Mrs. Brown had a 24-inch plastic culvert under their driveway. Well, since since, he's bought it and things have collapsed some and washed into the river or the stream a little bit. Virtually no running water. He wanted to know what the town's liability on it was because in, I think in the paperwork it says that they're liable to replace. Owners, the property owner puts the first one in, the town replaces if they need to be the second culvert. If it's damaged or, you know, rusted out or damaged.
You said in the paperwork, what paperwork?
I think it's in the town.
Minister.
Driveway stuff, driveway.
On the driveway policy?
Policy, I think that's the way it's always been. So my question is to the town, it's like, well, that's why I took Bruce down there and had him look at it also, is part of the issue is the town's where the culvert is. What he is proposing is putting a piece of culvert inside of the 30-inch that is there, which would make 24-inch, connecting to his culvert, which is 24-inch and there's nothing wrong with it. And covering that up to eliminate the issue of the water erosion coming down from Route 7 and the side of Maple Street. It would put it down further, a little bit further than put it back into the stream, but it would eliminate that wash right there straight across from Family Dollar. So my question to the board is, what would they like to do with it? Because I'm not sure quite how to go about it.
Does that sound like a workable plan?
Well, I do, and I think it's can be, a culvert could be put in, closed up, and it could be eliminate the issue that's there, put it down a little further, back into where the head wall is better. And not saying it's going to be a perfect fix, but it's going to eliminate the issue across from the entrance to the driveway. Not sure whether Ronnie should eat it all or the town should eat it all. I think maybe work together on it and not have to get into each other's pockets quite so bad. That's why I'm bringing it to the board, because I don't know what they want to do with that.
Is there a way to look at that driveway policy so we can see what was established in the past?
Yep.
Okay.
Will the 24-inch work with that 30 culvert? Or is there any obstruction inside the culvert?
It should slide right inside, I measured, it should slide right inside of it. And the opposing end should slide her 24-inch right inside that and make another joint and be done with that. Fair, crush, grow, compact it, should be gullset.
When I looked at that, that whole ditch has got all kinds of silt in it.
Yep.
Is that something you can take out of there at the same time, clean that ditch?
Well, yeah, I think Steve can get in and get some of that cleaned out. The issue being with that ditch is when it gets down towards railroad tracks, there's no outfall. So it kind of fills up in there. I know the railroad has already dug that out once. And I don't know if they can do it again, but yes, that whole ditch is full, it needs to be cleaned out. There's a lot of dirt in it.
Well, definitely going that 24, 30-inch is a lot cheaper than if we have to take that whole thing out of there.
Yeah.
And with that being that in our right of way, I think we're probably going to eat the expense anyhow.
I don't know, that's why I wanted to bring it to the board, I wanted them to make the decision on what.
If it was a question of something further back up the driveway, I would say, yeah, he should be expensed.
That's correct.
But I think where it is there, I mean, we've had trouble with that ditch for as long as I've been on the board.
That, I think that's when the Cumberland Farms built the new parking lot and building and they put all storm drains in. I think that runoff was part of the deal with the state that they had to catch, have storm drains on their property to run in there. Our storm drain across the road from Nash Drive also comes in there too. And I think it's Meacham Street too.
I think anything you have to do is what the state put in there would fall back on them. But that one, that one culvert, that driveway, I think is probably ours.
Yeah.
My thought would be do it all in shot, take the backhoe over there and clean that ditch at the same time that you're putting that culvert through. Does anybody else on the board have an idea?
That sounds like.
My suggestion was that maybe we split the cost with Ronnie, but I mean, it's.
Is the culvert plan, though it says that the town is liable for the second one, I'm, for some reason, I thought I read that years ago.
Yeah, once installed, the road commissioner shall inspect and accept it in writing, the culvert will then become the responsibility of the town.
Exactly. So if it was accepted into writing, that culvert, then it is, then it becomes the town's responsibility?
I don't know who put that culvert in for Mrs. Brown, that's probably been done, it looks like a fairly new culvert, but I don't know when it was put in.
Might have been when Cummings.
It was before me.
Maybe when Cummings.
Yeah.
I don't know. But the two, the issue being you can't just put a piece of pipe in the middle and cover it because they're misaligned, they won't line up. So you need to take the pre-existing one that's there, that's in there, out and realign it with the new one you're putting in, and then just keep running it going. With that culvert, it's fine, just keep running it going.
You just need to realign.
It just needs to be dug out and set over. It's just not aligned so you can hook things together the way it needs to be.
And by covering it up isn't going to, anything that would be running down into the ditch now?
It's going to go further down and come inward small.
It's not just going to run over it and go into the road or anything?
No, 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 it's going to go down just like it's doing.
No, I mean, on the side where, like right near where you're covering it.
No, it's going to just go down to the road shoulder more.
Okay.
And the back end of the ditch line.
Okay.
But like I say, it's, it's a call on the slackboard, what they'd like to do and how they want to do it. My suggestion would be to put a culvert in and cover it up and eliminate that wash issue They do have a 24-inch culvert down there. The garage.
Are we in agreement to go that way?
Yes.
I'd say by consensus that we're in agreement.
Put the culvert in, extend it, cover it up.
Eric has to leave soon for another meeting, so can we take him out?
Okay, just kind of touching base with East Street, I was at the last meeting, actually, I guess it was two meetings ago. Touching base with the ditching and the brush treatment removal on East Street. And I know Phil came up and I think they started it.
Yep.
And it looked pretty good. And I was just questioning, where are we with that, where are we going with that? Are we, are we, do we have a, and this is a question. Go ahead, Bob, go ahead.
Well, I was going to talk to town about that again tonight. I went over there planning on doing a couple hours' work, and I got an hour in before what I bought broke from the factory. So my part held up, my welding job held up, the rest of it didn't. So at some point, I'd like to go back over and do a little more clearing, and I would probably get that section done between the base of Lee Holton's, Kurt Holton's house, you know, to Eric's driveway, back down through to Lee Holton's place. The majority of the heavier brush, well, I've been cutting eight, 10-inch trees and laying them down, and Steve was taking them and putting them up in Eric's stump dome. I'd like to finish that and then let the town look at it and decide whether they want to do some of this in the future down the road after they go through and do a little brush work with the smaller stuff. Because it's literally so viney and thick over there, you can't seat it, the base of the tree you cut. It's really bad. That's, the other thing I was going to talk about was the brush hog for the small machine to do a lot of this roadside cleanup in the winter time when we have no leaves, you can see what you're doing, we'll have to contend with a little snow. That's something I was going to contend with after we talked to Eric.
Just had a question on, and honestly, for an hour's worth of work, it looked great. I mean, you've got a lot of stuff up there.
Yeah, we did roughly 250, 300 feet in the hour.
So that being said, you're, I would love to go with you next time you're there, we'll cut some of those trees so you can just keep pushing it back.
Yeah.
Cut them, tip them right over. Cut them, tip them right over and just get them out of there. Question I had was, are you further ahead to wait on a grinder? Or is there, is there a reason that you just can't take a backhoe in the thumb and pull some of that viney crappy stuff out, or does that create more of a?
No, you can pull a lot of that down with the machine. Issue being with that is when you do that, you disturb a lot of undergrowth that pulls up with it.
Right.
And you make a lot of mess, a lot of stuff in the road. But yeah, you can do some of that. You know, there's still some tree stubs left there that were going to get recut off, they just didn't get to it that day.
Right.
You know, I sheared the tops out of them, and they were going to come back and just cut the eight or 10-foot stub off of the chainsaw and push right out over the bank up to Eric's. So it just, we didn't hold together as good as we expected.
Right.
Yeah, you could do that, but we're not going to do, we're not looking for a grinder. It's just a miniature brush hog that actually fits on the boom, and you can just mow with it. So he can limb and cut all that brush down and mulch it out.
Right, so he can actually get vertical and come down.
Yeah, he could go right over just like a hedge sharpener. Set right over, whip through the boom and cut it and trim down the roads.
Right.
Because, yeah, they need to find from it.
I mean, the first, you know, I'll be honest, the first year, from what I've seen from Clarendon when they did it.
Yeah.
Looks like a mess, but, you know, because you're grinding a lot of that stuff.
Oh, there's a lot of debris, a lot of debris in front of it.
The next year, it all greens up and it looks like a green wall there.
Yeah.
So you deal with it the first year, but I did want to say, you know, it looked, I was impressed that.
It worked, it worked. It's fairly quick, safe, you don't have to deal with men under the trees, you don't have to worry about the tree going around the power line. You grab, shears it out, pick it up later in the road.
We did coincidentally lose power that day, and I like.
No, wasn't it? Wait a minute. Oh, I wonder if it was a gentleman that moved in down there, Lee Holton, he cut a tree on the side of the road. I bet he got into the tree with his machine.
Probably, yeah.
I was long gone, car was still on my left, lights are on.
I admit, I did tie a truck on. But no, I did, you know, I just might say, I think it looks good and then hopefully the.
I hear the heat pushing. Yeah, there's a lot to do.
So Phil, when do you think, is there any estimate of when you might be able to get back up there again?
Well, it's going to be November, December now. Wrong time of year, trying to do some of that right now, just.
If you do that amount of brush hogging up there, what are you going to use for equipment? Or is that something you're going to have to let out, or what?
Well, no, well, you were missed, you were out a couple meetings now, so we talked about a small brush head, brush hog that goes on a small excavator. So, and it's, it's, I'm trying to get some more information this past week and a half, and I haven't been able to get any more, so in time, I can get some more information on it. Not huge money, not the money they were talking for the rotary heads, you know, 30-plus thousand for a rotary head. You're only talking somewhere between 5 and 7,000 for one of these smaller heads that plumbs right up to us, our small excavator. And in the off-season, they can go along and trim all this stuff back, go road to road with a little excavator, just clean it up. Then if they, you guys decide you want to go through and cut the bigger stuff that leans out on the road, which what I was doing, that's something we sit down and figure it out.
In the packet, we've got a equipment rental for a tractor here.
Yep.
Have you looked at that or seen it?
Yes, the one in Middletown.
Yes.
I'm not sure what, which one that is over there. Is that the town of Middletown itself?
No, it's a company, a company in Middletown. Paper House, Army Center, that's about.
I don't know.
It's a lot cheaper than what we were paying.
Yep. But if you get something that goes on our track machine, you'll do a lot of that, I think that. You're still going to have your roadside mowing and your grass, like on 140 and Creek Road and that, you can either rent that or do something with. But a lot of the brushier stuff can be done with an excavator through winter if they have a head for it. That's basically what that is, just same thing.
If we did go with these people, I would think we would want to have them provide an operator.
Yeah, it was another additional, what, 25 or 30 dollars an hour?
Just as an hourly rate, it doesn't really say what it is, but.
The arm that you're looking at, does that have an attachment that would do roadside mowing?
The machine I'm looking at, Bush Hog?
Yeah.
It goes right on our excavator. Goes right on the boom of the excavator.
Do we still need to rent something like this?
Well, you're still going to have a certain amount of roadside mowing, like 140.
Okay.
Creek Road, you know, a smaller version of what that is. You're not going to have, you know, all this brushy stuff along all the major dirt roads that.
With the reduced amount, would you be looking at a one-week or a two-week rental?
Oh, I think a one-week rental.
One-week rental?
Yeah, we easily do that. I did all the roads this year, one pass with my machine, and it was only 49 hours, everything. And there's a lot of that you won't do if you mow with our excavator.
I think it's well worth renting it before January 1st.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's quite a difference.
Least, least to get it reserved.
Yes.
Yeah.
What timeframe would we want to do it?
We always try to do it the last week of June, before the 4th of July weekend, that's what I thought.
You think that's a little too early? It seems like stuff really grew up this year.
Oh, it grew. This year it didn't grow much after 4th of July, because it's so dry. It's just something we did because of 4th of July traffic and stuff. Anytime in mid, in July would work.
We also got Litter Salt on there, I don't believe we've gotten a final bid on any of this yet. The verbal Appalachians was in 90s. Last year, the contract was 72, 31. As pretty much expected, it's in everything, it's going to be higher this year. Sandy, have we gotten any other prices on this yet?
No, we're still waiting for Cargill's, Cargill about the state contract offer District 3, so.
I think probably we better wait on that until we've got something more firm.
Yeah, we went with them last year, I'm hoping there are any.
John mentioned the shortage of depth.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you.
John mentioned the shortage on depth, have they been able to obtain some of that?
Yeah, barrels, they haven't had any issue. I think it's just another scare tactic. Fuel, depth fluid, it's something to make everybody go out and hoard it all, toilet paper.
You probably had a chance to look at the maps at Green Mountain Power Center?
Yes.
Do you see anything that's bad about that?
No, the one on Sugar Hill.
Yeah.
I spent a couple hours up there with them. After we spent some time up there, Candace Patch called me and said that she was not happy with what they were going to do in her yard, so I don't know if things are going to change on that or not.
Which one was that?
Candace Patch?
Munson.
Munson.
Oh, sorry, that's still using Candace.
What about running a power line up through the ditch? I mean, to me, that doesn't seem like we want to agree.
I think the obvious thing is if they can bring it.
It's on the shoulder of the road, actually.
If they can bring it down to the road, it's going to be better, but.
It's in the shoulder of the road.
Yeah.
That's, they said the ditch line, I said, well, that's just going to be a nightmare if it ever floats.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
If you move it over, they're talking four to five feet in the road, which is not going to be an issue. But in the ditch, you know, you don't know how much more water you're going to get in the ditch and how much it's going to move around.
So they want to run it in the road itself?
Shoulder, yeah, right on the very shoulder of the road.
Is that going to become a road hazard?
Shouldn't be, not at five or six feet down.
I don't know.
I told them, I said, lines, it's not like Geo, was it Geo Tech that did that last run? Mastech. They did the last run and plowed through all the culverts. They just were a nightmare up there. So I, no, I, I see no issue with doing that. They do whatever it is now.
I don't think we've got an issue as long as they can settle with Candy.
Yeah, they'll have to settle up with her on what, where they put the transformer, last
Do we need to talk about prospects?
About the 25, yeah. I don't think still need to get in on that though.
Oh, yeah, yep.
She's got two grants and aid equipment program and the grants and aid. I'm, have you figured out how much we're going to actually have to spend above the 50, 60?
On that debris blower?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I see Towne Shuesberry has one, so I could talk.
You got a quote last year from Buffalo Turbine?
Yep.
7,900.
Okay, let me research that a little more.
And then the grant's going to give us 56, so we have to pay anything above 56.
Okay.
And obviously, after the, the chape and road or whatever was up there, I think we probably need to talk with Steve. Either Stephanie, we're doing a self-inspection now.
Oh, on Blackhawk?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to kind of confuse them.
I think probably we need to get down, do a serious talk with him over specifications.
Yeah.
I mean, specs.
All of the book.
In the same vein, we had a complaint about speed on Prospect Street over here. A question arisen whether we should be putting 25 mile an hour speed signs up there. Basically, I'm going to put that to the board to decide what they want to do. I can tell you from experience, I don't believe speed signs are going to do an awful lot there. And I can tell you right now that putting a sheriff over there to run radar is useless. My past experience running radar is everybody and his brother knows you're sitting there. I doubt that he will dedicate an unmarked cruiser to do it, and even with an unmarked cruiser, everybody comes off that street or goes up it, flashes their lights at everybody to let them know there's a cop sitting there. And the street is so short, there's only a limited amount of speed that you can reach top speed, short of driving a Mustang 5-0 that will jackrabbit or whatever. I'm sure that if she's there and a car came close to her, 25 or 35 was frightening as all heck.
Yeah.
I don't have an objection to putting a 25 at the beginning of the streets. The agency of transportation recommends that we not oversign streets in the town. Because basically, all you're doing is putting up something on somebody's lawn to mow around. But I'll leave it to the others here to, to decide what they like. At the same time, I don't really want to tell the lady we're not doing anything.
It's a tricky street because there really is like no place to walk there. You're basically, when you walk that street, except for the sidewalks at the bottom, down by the mobile station, you're basically in the road.
Yeah.
When you're walking there, and the sides are pretty steep, so it's not like you can really get over. I don't know what we can do.
I can tell you, I've had kids playing soccer in the street, I've seen basketballs bounce. The winter time, the kids come up there to turn their sleds around to go down the hill.
Yeah.
I totally understand that the need for people to be more observant and to slow down.
How close?
But for the last 30 years, it's been a quandary to me to how to slow them down.
How close is, there is a 25 mile an hour sign not far from that street, how far is it from that street? The one that's already up?
I honestly can't tell you off the top of my head. I almost think that there's either a no truck traffic or a speed limit sign as you enter from. or a speed limit sign as you enter from 140. And I think the sign on the lower end is right almost just off Route Seven. I don't think a car coming out of Cumberland Farms would drive by it.
This is, just, you guys can hear me. Is there a possibility to have like signs that like say, "High pedestrian areas" or something like that? Cause like I know I walk down, uh, my daughter and my dog, they're like, "We're dead all day."
Or children at play?
They don't like those. AOT doesn't like the children at play.
Okay.
But I mean, it's, it's a village. Every place is a high pedestrian.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, are you gonna put signs everywhere?
And that's, I think if we start doing this, it's gonna be a double village will be twenty-five.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
We can ask Steve to make sure that there's a twenty-five posted at the beginnings of both, both streets. Hopefully that, hopefully it'll have some effect. I'm not sure that it will, but...
Do you wanna put up the extra signs or no?
I say no.
I don't.
Okay.
I say no.
Cause I mean, it's, the more signs you have up, the more things get ignored, more, it's, it comes down to common sense. And a sign's not gonna give, give anybody that. And same with having a, you know, it was like once it was said that the sheriffs were gonna be mainly on one route, then everybody else knew all the side roads were free. Things need to be unpredictable with them.
I think we send a note to the sheriff to have him, have his patrols say go across there at least twice, about twice a shift.
At least make it part of the rotation.
Yeah.
Make, yeah.
But, I mean, all roads should be at some part of their rotation.
Yes.
I don't, I mean, that's...
Cause on all the side streets here can be crazy traffic.
Everywhere here.
Yes. Okay.
To an extent, I would agree. But when you're running a four-hour shift at the most...
Oh, I'm not saying hit them all within the four-hour shift.
Right.
Just, you know, not, not limit where they are within that four-hour shift, saying you need to be here, here, and here. Make it sporadic.
I would agree that, like, having them go across there, that's a heavily travel, travel street.
Yep.
Uh, Mill Street, those streets in there aren't. We're getting, we're gonna address it later, the one-way traffic on Florence.
And, and our traffic pattern will change within the town, once that happens, too.
That road, Florence, has been twenty-four thousand pounds forever. And yet, nobody gets stopped or written for driving on there with a semi. I do think that if we're using him, Railroad Street, River Street, Prospect Street, Hall, the streets that see a tremendous amount of traffic. And some of the other streets, Florence, that's gonna come into question with what we do with it. But certainly, the side streets running down to, uh, Cumberland Farms on this side, some of them really don't have enough traffic to, to be patrolled that often. It's nice that they drive through there occasionally.
That's what I'm saying, just occasionally, not like, give them a list of hit all of these every time.
Exactly.
Just not have it, cause when they do have those disturbances and other things going on, that they can't do anything. And so they are just always just hitting the same three streets every time.
Right.
It's not fair to the rest of the citizens.
Just to make it more random, a little bit...
Right, yes, you should hit bing bing more often, just...
Yes.
Little variety. So everybody feels that they have some representation by the sheriffs.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, no, I'm all set.
Public comments. How was our Amex, was it eliminated? Wallingford Fire Department Coin Drop.
Sure. So I also had two other things after the coin drop piece or before, it doesn't match, it's very mind-blowing. One, we've responded to this building a couple of times in the past few years for fire alarms. That's what we're supposed to do. But I need to make sure the board is aware that the fire alarm does not go anywhere. It's called a local alarm, so it only comes right to here and beeps inside the building. And maybe there's an outside one, I'm not positive. But if we don't get a call from a neighbor, we don't know that the fire alarm's gone off. So, we had a lightning strike at the tower, but I don't really think it hit the tower, I think it was nearby. The alarm went off, but we had one of our firefighters living across the street. And he came outside to see what the big boom was and heard the alarms. The other one we had, it was just a child that pulled the pole station in here on a Saturday, somebody was cleaning or something. Uh, and did that, but I didn't know if the board knew that it didn't go anywhere. It's not the law, you don't have to do it. It has to go somewhere if somebody sleeps here. Right, if we're gonna sleep people here? Not in an emergency. So if we have another hurricane or something, and we set up cops somewhere, that's okay, because there'll always be a fire watcher, there'll be somebody awake. But I just need, needed to make you guys aware of that. Though, from, from our point of view, it's a pretty big building, right? And a head start on a fire, any minute we can get there before it gets bigger would be really cool. But it, it isn't required, it's not an expense that you have to take. It's just, I didn't know if you already knew it or you didn't know. It, it doesn't matter, there's no state law, NFA doesn't cover that. When people are in the building, they're awake, right? They're here for meetings or working or what have you, so there's no one here sleeping intentionally, right? So, I wanna make you aware of that, so whatever you wanna do, to do with that. The other things, can I get in your weekly, monthly newsletter if it comes out before?
Yes.
About, not so much the fire alarm, but when you change your clocks, please change the battery, smoke detectors, and COs.
Okay.
Just something like that.
Julie does, she's...
Okay, Julie, thank you. Word it any way you want and have it come from whoever you'd like, but that, that's a good time to do it. When we change the clocks, I think it's November first this year, first or second? Something like that.
Sounds right.
I think it's the second, okay, coin drop. So, we have a permit from the state, from AOT as we usually do. And we usually come up here and make you guys aware of when it is and where and the times and all of those type of things. So we're looking at Saturday, we have the permit, except I left it in the car, but we can email it to you if you'd like. Or I can run up to the car when I'm done and just bring it back in. So we have, we have that. Uh, we're looking at nine to three, is when we normally do it. And we do it down near the older area of, of Route Seven. So the question has been asked, I guess people have been asking questions about that. I'd love to talk to them, if you would like to. So where does the money go? And how much money does the Wallingford Fire Department, Wallingford Volunteer Fire Department have? So, uh, let me break it down for you. We have a little over twelve thousand dollars in the checkbook, okay? So, one reason that it's at twelve thousand dollars is each year we do, we used to do a banquet, right? With COVID and such, we couldn't do that. Then ran about eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars to put the firefighters and their families. We used to go to the bowling alley, we would cater it, rent a few lanes, they would enjoy themselves and they would go. People from the board could come, or the Prudential Committee could come, um, and we could do that. So, we, we haven't done that for two years. So where does the money go, what do we do with the money? So, we do things for our members, we assist with funeral costs or celebration costs. So Warren Allen, we just did that one. So that was twelve to fifteen hundred dollars from the Fire Department for food and for, um, uh, you handled most of that, so...
Food, beverage, um...
Food, beverage, things, things that we needed to give them a hand with, right?
Corporation paid for it.
So we do that to members and former members, so we assist them with that. Some of the other things that we do is, there are two budgets. The operational budget comes from the Prudential Committee or from the, the Water Department. It comes from them for the operational portion of it. So that's tires and fuel and fix the trucks and gear and all of those things. Everything else that the Fire Department needs is bought from the association. So when we have a structured fire, and I've got eight, nine towns in here, seven towns, whatever it turns out to be, and I've got thirty to fifty people here, we buy meals with that. So the rule of thumb is, anytime it's the middle of the night, you provide food. Anytime they miss a meal break, so if a six AM call comes in and they didn't get breakfast or whatever, we wait till ten o'clock or so, and we get them something there. If there's a lunchtime holdover, just like if you were at work, would you get a lunch break if you were staying at work? So if it's dinner or what have you. And that, we do, we don't do anything fancy, right? We do Ramonto's Pizza sometimes, we do, um, Sal's, we'll buy some things with, if he happens to be open with. We'll get sandwiches and all that, but that all adds up as well. The uniforms that we have, the Class A uniforms, which is the, um, high suit, double-breasted pants, the whole shooting match there. And then the Class B uniform, which is the short-sleeve shirt and pants. That's about six to seven hundred dollars per person. So we don't buy one set a year or one set here or there. We get a much better deal when we go in and buy six at a time. So when we buy six at a time and we're due to do that, that's three to four to five thousand. I don't know what it'll be this year with prices and things, cause we're not pricing, but we're about to do that. So one of the things that we do also with the money is we fix and continue to maintain the old girl, which is the first motorized piece that Brad's Wallingford had, um, and it's there. So that needs work as well. But the issue is that we also use the money for, so if I need six to eight thousand dollars to put into the old girl to get that done, it doesn't leave me very much later if I bought the uniforms and I need money in there for meals, but we also use this money to help members. So if we have someone that's very sick, that needs their wife to stay at a hotel nearby or whatever, so the next one up for that will be one of our folks needs a double lung transplant, right? So his spouse is going to have to stay near him at, uh, a hospital in Boston, I don't remember which one. I think it's Mass General, but I'm not positive. So she's gonna have to stay there. We did some fundraising, but that brought in enough for me, two or three nights. She's gotta be down there for like thirty days. So we use the money for things like that. If there's a local fire department that we do, we go and use that money to go to their funerals for, out of respect, because as you saw with Warren's funeral, there's lots of fire departments that came home. So we would do things like that, so we need the uniforms or, uh, it, whatever those costs would be. And then just the ancillary things, T-shirts, these sweatshirts are eighty dollars each. We don't buy them every year and not everybody gets a new one, you have to be on the department a certain amount of time, because we don't wanna invest in, and then the person leaves or what have you. So they have names on them, so we're thinking about not having names on them, so they can be turned back in. So the Class A uniforms get turned back in, but everybody's a different size, right? So you have to tailor it anyway, to get it so it looks decent on people. But if we have someone that loses a lot of weight, that type of thing. So those are basically the things that we spend money on. The coin drop is our sole source of money, right? So we collect that each year. We used to do a chicken barbecue, but if we got to making a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars at the end of the chicken barbecue, after all the costs and such, um, there wasn't much there. The town did like it, people do like to come over and have that, but the prices now, so we were, the last time we did it too, maybe three years ago, was it twelve fifty, I think, a meal? Or twelve dollars a meal? And, uh, we weren't making very much money there. You can't ask the townspeople at a chicken dinner for fifteen dollars, right? Maybe you can, but, uh, we always have a tip jar there, if you'd like to pay a little more, that's fine. Excuse me, but, um, it, it just wasn't prosperous. We would do it because the townspeople liked it and it would be fun and we would enjoy it, so, but they wouldn't be anything to help us with what we need to have in the coffers for those type of things. So, the other problem with the old girl is I don't wanna, we don't wanna piecemeal it because it costs more money for the labor if you're stripping down the transmission or stripping out the engine and you're stripping out things. I wanna pay the labor once, so let's do the whole thing. But I've been very hesitant to spend that money yet because he hasn't had his lung transplant yet, so we don't want that. Don't, don't know what that cost is gonna be. And as well, the other costs that we must do, we've gotta get the uniforms, we've gotta get that straight. We buy the flags, we buy the things for Memorial Day to go out and do, do those type of things. So, that's what we use the money for. And as you know, not a penny of that comes from a taxpayer. The town doesn't, doesn't give us money for that, right? They supply us with the budget, right? Which is through the Prudential Committee piece, but you guys are all in that, because you guys contribute to that as well. And that's, we use that for operational money that we do there. So they don't buy the meals for when we're out there and the old days of having a few people get together that aren't on the department maybe, or related to people on the department, to make food and do all that stuff, those are gone. We, we don't, I have a hard time getting enough firefighters on the ground, never mind asking people, "Okay, can you have your girlfriend or your dad or mom or Uncle Harry come in?" and do that. And we don't have the sources in town anymore. We used to have, um, the store where the little restaurant is, she used to be wonderful down there. We used to be able to get things there. Uh, we hit Cumberland Farms sometimes for some pizzas, but they can't do much for us. So, it, it's important to do that. We do call in the Red Cross if it's, if it's going to be quite some time, excuse me, or if it's really cold. Really, pizza's terrible on a fifteen-degree night, which just doesn't work, right? So Red Cross has a truck that they can bring in, they make coffee and they do some of those things, but you're really expected to give them some money as a donation, but when you do. So we would do, do that particular thing, the county usually helps us with that as well. So, that, that's where we are with that. We're looking at this coming Saturday with a rain date of Sunday, uh, ninety-three.
Okay, the simple, the simple thing is, normally we do two, uh, coin drops a year. Yours is one of them. Is everybody on the, on the committee still in with doing the Fire Department Coin Drop?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, that's good. I don't have it, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Do you wanna copy the permit? It's out in the car or, if Johnny emails it to you, but just...
I can always email it to you, it's no problem.
If, if you wanna see it.
Yeah.
So that's where you're standing, that's what we're doing, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, we're set, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here for the concession stand? Okay, go for it.
Yeah, no. Um, so, um, so the...
You're gonna have to up your audio just a bit.
Uh, so the, uh, the renovation we talked about the last time I was here, um, so I created that plan because I do engineering and I have software and I can do stuff like that. But, uh, that's not a real architectural plan. It doesn't meet ADA and fire code compliance. It's just something I did, like if I was gonna renovate my home or something. And it's not adequate to get bids on from contractors. They, they want a real plan. And Bill Lowson suggested we talk to Jay White. Okay, and we, and I did. And I talked to Jay's, um, company that he used to work for. And they provided me a quote for using Jay's services. And Jay would do, now this is what, I, uh, I think it would be nice, even if we didn't do anything, to have this ADA and fire code evaluation done on the building. Even if we don't do anything.
I don't think you wanna do that, Samuel.
Okay, well, that's just the suggestion, but, um, but if we wanna do anything, if we wanna do any kind of renovating, we have to have, have a real stamped architectural plan. My CAD drawings aren't gonna cut it. Jay's estimate for creating a plan, uh, for a public bathroom utilizing the women's room area is twenty-five hundred. And I talked to two, I talked to another architect in Dorset who will give us a quote, but he said it's gonna be way higher. And I talked to his boss, uh, his former boss, and also he said, "Yeah, if you don't use Jay," he was a retired guy, "it is gonna be a lot higher." So, um, so if you, if we wanna do anything, you know, it'd be a good idea to, you know, to use Jay. So, my, what I wanted to talk to you guys about was, is that something we... is that something we could find using the building fund? And if not, you know, 'cause if not, you know...
Well, let me say right up front, I have no interest at all in using Jay White for anything again. We, we attempted to do, get the town hall painted, and Jay White made such an issue out of the request for proposals that nobody would even bid on the project. I mean, he came back with this thirty-page document that was so detailed and restrictive that I think he scared everybody off, and then when we asked him to edit it, he was very unprofessional, to put it politely, about having to correct it. He ended up just quitting. So there's been some other situations where we sought his help and he wouldn't help us. So I am totally opposed against using Jay White for this. But the other thing I wanna say is that this is a building that's used eight weeks out of the year, and I really think we need to think about that fact. I mean, my son Jeff met with you, and one of the things he didn't say to you, Simeon, was that if you start moving walls or anything, and it'd be the same case with a plumber, is that they'll have to pull us what they call a state permit. And as soon as you do that, everything has to be brought up to code. So this is, could turn into this huge expensive project.
Well, so that's, that's fine, I just wanted, I wanted to bring it up, you know. I think we could back up and just focus on maintenance items.
I agree with you there, I think...
Garage door, the dropped ceiling, Bill Lozen thinks it needs new plumbing fixtures.
I agree with that, I think we should maintain what we have.
Okay, well, that, that's good, that.
But to turn around and spend a lot of money on a design to revamp the building, I mean, it could turn into a huge expense.
Some of the folks on the committee, on the REC committee, they, they think that evaluating the existing building would be smart, because they don't even know if the existing building as-is meets these codes. Okay, so the reason I'm saying it may be a good idea just to look at the building, no changes at all, just look at the building, the way it is now with the windows boarded up and the doors that have been sealed up and stuff. Just because we might want to have a minimum, just to know what the minimum amount is necessary to bring it up to code. And that is kind of, you know, if you think about it, maybe it's a safety thing, but... So, you know, that would be no renovating, no moving walls, no nothing. Just, just look at the building, see if it meets code.
Well, we know there's things in it that don't meet code.
Okay, well, then, you know...
I would be, I would be willing to bet that it won't come up to code. And you've got the state involved, and the state's going to say, "Fix it or don't use it." If we don't use it, we're going to lose it.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm just saying, some of the other folks in the REC committee said that we should do that, so I had to bring it up.
How much was it gonna cost to do that type of...
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred. Jay would be doing, if we, if we got a real architect that's not retired, it would be more than that.
Not, not the plan, just to check for being up to code, it'd be twenty-five hundred?
No, he, that would be...
Because I thought it was different. That was to do the plan, how...
You could probably get...
I'm not thinking it would be that much cheaper, you know. You know, what we could do is put a ceiling on it, say, you know...
The first thing we need to look at, it's not gonna come up to code. So you're gonna pay a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars for somebody to tell us it's not up to code?
No, they would tell us what to do to fix it.
But, but it would cost that much, and then we would need, and then we would need to act on that.
Yeah.
And then, no matter what, what happens, we then have to act upon that, or close the building.
Now, you might not have to act upon it immediately, well...
Yes, you would have to, depending on, depending on the, on the things.
Yeah, I'll come right back to the state, use it or lose it.
Right.
But I don't think it would be a tremendous amount of money if we're not changing anything. We might have to make some doors bigger, we might have to fix some windows, um...
Because if we're already talking about making it sound...
Rather than, rather than that, how about a house inspector, one of these guys that goes around and looks at the houses that are being sold and stuff, whose actual job is reading the wiring and that? I don't think that'd be any more expensive than what he's talking about.
Well, I'm just thinking if we're already discussing maybe putting some money into fix the stuff that we, we know needs to kind of be, like the fixtures, the door, the this. It would be interesting, I'm wondering, because if we're gonna do that, and then, since we are now having this discussion of should we have it checked or not? Will somebody make us get it checked or not? It's kind of like the salt shed, once we knew that, okay, we can't make any additions, we have to do this, because we knew there was an issue. That, since we are, that maybe...
If you bring a plumber, and he's gonna tell you what's, what's, what in there is the code currently.
Yeah.
So, but as long as you don't mess with stuff, stuff is grandfathered.
Right.
But as soon as you start creating new, as soon as you're creating new things, then you have to pull a state permit, and then they're gonna say you gotta bring everything up.
Right, so if we are getting somebody in there to do, if we're, they will help guide, then just don't, like the plumber will say, "Well, this isn't good, you need to do this." If we are fixing the door...
I want to ask the VLCT if they have some recommendation on their safety inspector or somebody along his degree coming in and looking at it.
I did wanna ask that, you know, the building hasn't been changed, like back when Gary Perdett used to live there, it was laid out...
Yeah, that was many, many, many years ago.
Okay, so when they made the change to where, the way it is now, did they do an evaluation like that? Or do you think they just did it? Because maybe...
I can't say, I mean, years and years ago, a lot of things got done that just got done, I mean...
Well, I was thinking maybe we could dig and see if we can find something, maybe there was a...
I mean, it used to be a residence, from what I understand, people, people used to live there years ago.
Yeah, Gary said he lived there, so...
That was when Gary was...
Steve Bayes, they used to have beer in the refrigerator.
I heard it was pretty funny.
Since, since it is used for where children are kept during the summer camps, there must have been some evaluation at some point to say that it's safe.
They only, we only started to have, that just started being the spot for the rec.
Nothing was ever...
Two years ago.
Never had to be verified? That's...
Well, why don't we do this then? I can do what Nelson's saying, I'll see if there's any cheaper way of getting that evaluation done, and then I can come back the next month or something. I mean, maybe, maybe we don't use Jay, but we, I mean, we might... I mean, there's an advantage using Jay from an architect's standpoint, like he's gonna be the cheapest. But maybe there might be something else, like you're saying, an inspector of some sort.
Right, a home inspector's kind of thing.
Yeah.
Because that's what, one last one, it was like three, five hundred to get a appraiser and an inspector, I think.
Three, five hundred?
That's what we had. It's probably a lot more now, but...
There are a lot, there are some issues with the building that we should just do as general maintenance, and the garage door is a safety issue, because it's a heavy door and the frame, and the wall's moving and the frame, according to the building list, and the frame is likely to be replaced. Because if that fell on somebody, that would be a disaster.
Well, I don't think it's gonna fall, but it is, it does need work.
Yeah, so that should probably be something that...
Well, we can try to get a quote just for, just for fixing it.
Yeah, to get how much that costs.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Sandy?
What?
Would that fellow that came down here, Wade, Wade or Wayne?
Yeah.
Do you think he'd come down and look at that building to tell us if we have any safety issue? Or if the VLCT has somebody in that? He's our insurance, the guy that rates stuff for insurance?
I think, he's done it, he's done it before too.
But I also think if you task your insurance company to come in and check something, and they see something wrong, they're gonna turn around and tell you, "Fix it." You gotta get it fixed.
He did come down, I don't remember, it was like four, five, six years ago, because there was outlets that needed to be fixed, and there was a number of things that he found that we did correct, even just like wood chips and under the swings out there, like all of that stuff. So we did, and we have had Wade down here, and he has got to the bottom and rated it fixed, and he's...
And that was five, six years ago?
I can't remember exactly, but it was several years ago. Almost a ten, more than that.
Okay.
We need to maintain things in the building, but I, I think we should not go looking for trouble.
But if, you know, yeah, we need to see...
It's, it's finding that line between that and also keeping things safe.
Yeah.
And finding the reasonable place to be.
So if we had like that in-between person, like maybe...
Yeah, yeah, like what Nelson was saying.
Yeah. Just said, hate to put money in to just have everything else.
Right.
Well, the VLCT will do it, there's no real money being in it. We do the VLC contract.
Yeah, that'd be good. It's a good question. I'm, it would be something that...
Is that something we wanna ask somebody to look at or not?
Have we ever asked about that in the past?
I think if you, if you turn around and create that bathroom, that third bathroom, you're gonna have to make it ADA accessible.
Yeah, I agree, that if you change stuff...
Yeah, if you change stuff, you're gonna have to bring it up to code.
I agree with that.
And it'd be afraid to see what the plumbing is underneath and how much more you would have to do. Right.
Well, Bill Lozen said we should work with the existing plumbing, and we were gonna do that.
Okay.
So we were gonna add a new bathroom like we kinda talked about, because that would be too expensive. And so we were gonna work with the two existing bathrooms and create a layout that would utilize that. That was what we were gonna ask you to do.
Well, maybe we can go Nelson's route about finding that person through VCLT? And going that way, and then see about, you know, definitely if there are things that need to be maintained, looking into what that's gonna be.
And then a discussion if that's too much for at this time?
Right.
Which means potentially we don't have a concession stand next to them. As long as everybody's aware that that is what could occur.
Right, and then seeing how much the repairs would be, if that totally comes out of the REC budget or if building, if the building fund would be accessed a little bit.
Or the grant, because you had one that, the one this year was again next summer, right?
There is a grant.
Yeah.
Okay. But just as long as we're all, you know, just because it says we cannot, that we have to fix all these things that may not be able to be done.
Right.
Immediately.
Right.
While we're on the lake, we also have a survey that was included. Basically, even being a member of the board and knowing the finances, I think I would check everything on this as a wish list. There are some of these, "Would you like to have a bathroom facility at the park?" Well, yes, who wouldn't like to have their private bathroom at the park? "Would you like to see a water fountain?" Absolutely. We've ruled these things out pretty much, not because we wouldn't like to have them there, and that we don't want people to have that convenience. It's simply been totally impractical for us to do it.
This, this survey seems to me like it's trying to resurrect a lot of stuff that we determined previously couldn't be done, or we didn't, or previous boards didn't want to do.
Well, at least in, in those two items. The one with the water fountain, because there's, there's an issue with, with getting water down there. And also the, if I'm right, the fire department said that we can't access...
That sounds right.
The water that's down there. So that, maybe that should be taken off the list, because it's something that we can't do.
I think in general, we're trying to make some improvements to the town, and...
A lot of this stuff, like you're got on, you've got on hiking and biking, that's under the Conservation Committee. They're pretty much in charge with that whole area down there. They work in conjunction with you on some of this stuff. But I mean, pretty much they've been, they've been pretty good at coming up with what they wanna do over there. Quite honestly, I don't see the need for a page and a half survey that everybody wants everything that's on it, and the board has no way to provide it.
Just ask a historical question. I know, can of worms gonna happen now. Why is the Conservation, the Recreation Committee separated? It almost sounds like Conservation would be a subgroup of the Recreation Committee, because the, most of the things that Conservation does is, would be deemed by most people considered recreation. So why is it its own separate group? It seems to be that there's a lot of issues because it's of ownership, like this. So why, why are they separate?
For the first reason that comes to mind is they'd all quit.
Well, we're ready, we're gonna...
We're going back before you, there is a lot of bitter enmity between...
And, but I think that's because they are forced to like basically fight over the same resources.
And it sounds like, Simeon just said that there's plans for Conservation and Recreation to work together?
We wanna have a joint meeting, so that...
I've been on the board for twelve years. I have never seen a confrontation between REC and Conservation Astor Resources.
Okay, well, I mean, just even like right now, you're saying that they plan this, and I know when I was on the REC committee, there was some...
One of the things that we put in...
That's why I'm just, that's why I'm just asking, because it does seem like we're dividing resources rather than working together.
And the Recreation Committee would like to put out a survey just to see areas that might be worth exploring, to see about. I mean, I looked at this, and I saw about the free rental bike program, that sounds interesting.
Have you checked that out, though?
Nope.
Because somebody would have to...
This is the first time I heard about it.
Somebody would have to, to be around to rent out the bikes, make sure the bikes come back.
Right, but the thing is, is that, does that mean that you don't check it out?
Um, there's a company that Morgan has already talked to that sets it all up, and they run it all, kinda, it's like...
And this thing about online reservation for tennis, that really gets my gander.
I actually like that idea, because it's, it's an org, it's something that I've actually been saying for a while. It's like you don't know, like flag football's a great example. They dominate the whole thing, and nobody really knows when they're gonna be there. But it would be great to know if I could go on it online and see like, oh, I wanna bring a group of kids down there. I bring kids down there, and you can't use a single section of the field, because flag football is all over there, or even softball. In baseball, we have a lot of organizations, we've had frisbee golf and stuff wanting to use things. But nobody really knows, because there's no real communication and organization.
To have some sort of schedule is not a terrible idea.
Yeah.
Because then people know when they can... Because then people know when they can plan on doing things, when they can. They don't like go down and see nothing's available.
That was the whole point, it's like people might go play tennis and then they're always somebody there and-
Yeah. So maybe not necessarily rental for like, you know, for a specific, like I'm going to take the tennis court all day.
Right.
But at least the more organized, the people that were granting permission to use the park, that they have some formal way, like the sports teams, and that it's visual to everybody and not just, I'm gonna have a practice Sunday.
As far as tennis, though, I mean, that court is empty-
Right.
-half the time. And I don't wanna have to get on my computer to sign up. If I decide I wanna go down and play tennis some afternoon, I'm gonna go down. If somebody's there, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe not just necessarily that, but just in general.
There's a lot of older people that don't have computers, they're not gonna-
Yeah.
There's a lot of older people that are, actually, most of the people I see on that nowadays are older people that are playing pickleball.
So I said, from my point of view, not necessarily the tennis court, but the, the rec property in general.
Having some sort of maybe a weekly schedule of the things that are already planned and placed. Like when flag football has their, their schedule is pretty well set. To have something sent to the towns so people know this is when flag football is doing their thing, I think that's a pretty good idea, actually. Because that's something that's already planned in advance. If you had it out, other people could plan activities around it.
Right.
It was available to see the schedule.
Yeah. I mean, so with the survey, I think as-
Maybe not as much tennis, but other things.
Right.
Well, I, I think that's not a bad idea, but that rec committee could put out information of that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be on a, a computer.
Although having, more people use computers now than not and having some sort of online access is not a bad idea.
You know, it's funny, I was, for the work time, there was a, everybody wanted, some hospitals wanted to move to having tablet kiosk sign-ins. The only people that complained were the thirty-four-year-olds, the thirty to forty-year-olds saying the, the senior citizens would never be able to use them, and they did. Not, and I know thirty-year-olds that aren't on internet, so it goes, you know, not everybody uses every resource.
Okay, so are you guys gonna vote on something about the survey, like should we do it or not? Or?
I think-
I'd like to actually see more, a few more questions for seniors.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like it's completely, the one thing that we get all the time is with, with the demographics in this town.
Like-
I'm not really the one that was hitting up that survey.
Right.
But it's a different member of the rec committee.
Yeah, there really needs to be-
I think maybe this survey with a few modifications, like including in the thing about the seniors, which is a good idea. And I think maybe taking off things that are really not a possibility. We've, we've really explored the water option down at the rec field and I would love to see water down at the rec field. The way things stand right now, that's a, it's a no-go. And it's not coming from us, it's coming from other entities in town that says that we can't access that water supply. So maybe just taking a couple of questions out, adding-
And the stuff from Stone Meadow should come off because you guys all signed a document that stated that Stone Meadow is under the purview of the conservation committee. So everything on there about Stone Meadow should come off of it.
Unless this is a joint survey of recreation and conservation.
Which maybe that's an idea, it should be, though.
Never mind.
I mean, since it is kind of all, maybe you, the two groups should work together to make a survey to see what people really want.
Rec shared this with conservation, they discussed it at the meeting and they, they said this is, they said rec and conservation have completely different goals, so they don't wanna money the water by giving it to them in the survey.
Okay.
I'm not totally against the survey, but this one needs to be severely edited.
Okay.
I mean, like I said earlier, there's hardly nothing on here I wouldn't like to have. Fishing access, everybody fishes under the bridge. Or they fish down at the other bridge, down by True Temper. Most people aren't gonna walk along just to get it. A true fly fisherman will go anywhere, but, you know, fishing access area, that's a state's domain. River access pass? For the most part, the river, the river isn't accessible for boating, you know?
I'll, I'll tell Shannon that we have to re, look at the questions again and she can watch the video of this meeting. So, and maybe we can bring it back next, in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time and all the effort that's gone into this. And into the concession stand, too.
Yeah, we do appreciate the time you're putting into us, Samuel.
Because it's not that the stuff isn't needed, just, we need, we need improvements.
Just making the survey, just started out first if we wanted to do something like within the Wallingford standard and have it be on the website, so we could collect the boxes.
I think Justin said something about when the survey is complete, putting in the Wallingford standard.
No, no, sorry, I was saying instead of doing it at the election point, what about doing it, doing it through the Wallingford standard, having a survey that links the website and have it fall and people set up? To start to see, see what, what kind of response is this, versus having to print out all that paper and spend that money to allocate for something that like people might either will or will not.
So instead-
Quite, quite honestly, I think you'll do better on front page forum than you will on a website. I've never been on our website, but I go on front page forum constantly.
So maybe doing something where you had access in front porch forum, and I don't know if we would wanna make access in the newsletter as well. I know people do read the newsletter.
I think the newsletter probably goes to more people in town than-
I was gonna say, because if-
-the front porch forum.
If you're concerned that people can't use, well, oh-
Yeah, if it's somebody that's-
Exactly.
It can be difficult getting through it.
Is this something we wanna decide now or do we wanna table this for?
I think we can decide once we see the-
I think I'd like to see the new survey first.
Okay.
So as far as that, the concession building?
Yes.
So I'll see if I can find something cheaper than J.
And I think-
But-
If we're, if we're gonna contact Wade, is it, to see about, we can do some things on our end, too.
Yeah.
If that sounds okay.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe come back in two weeks or something?
Sounds, yes.
We have the-
Thank you, Simon.
Maybe you'll call me again?
Yeah.
We have the updated list for the insurance VLCT. Julie, any, anything comment on it?
Just a comment that I made, Art wanted that furniture bin added and Casilla gave us enough, six thousand for that. I think that, I think the, that sort of the sand shed's a little interesting, twenty-three thousand, that's what we're, the sand shed.
What's this now?
For passive renewal, our liability, twenty-three thousand we want the sand shed.
Furniture? That won't even cover the- Maybe we should change that?
We'll see that button again.
Hello, hello, yes, hello, okay, hello.
We got you back, just-
Cool.
Justin, we're looking at the VLCT update. Sandy, I know that you listed the sand shed at twenty-three, seven, oh, two. Can that be changed, will we update it, I mean?
Yeah.
It can be, yeah.
Yeah. We have to give them a number.
And then do we want to add the contractor furniture open bin for the six thousand? That looks like Art, Art is recommending.
What do we pay the animal control officer, twelve hundred, isn't it?
Yeah.
Insurance is more than what we pay him.
You're seeing concession stands worth almost a hundred thousand at the park.
If nobody has anything yet or believe-
What do you want to put for the sand shed?
Yeah.
They had to be in one lane.
Boy, I don't know anything. That's definitely under insurance.
Yeah.
Had to be in a treatment.
Well, we know if you had to just replace, what's there is gonna be a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand.
Yes.
If we had to replace that, just to put up the rafters and the structure.
Well, we could build another shed for fifty, fifty thousand dollars, probably.
I bet you can't buy the trusses for that now. If you bought the exact team truss, I bet you can't cover them for that.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm thinking of the salt shed.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no.
The sand shed, yes.
Well, they got that in for like eleven or twelve thousand, I think it was, the salt shed.
Yeah.
That's not worth a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but if we had to replace it, I mean, if it's-
Phil, when we built that, you follow up on Church Street that passed away, did all those poles and stuff.
Dennis Smith.
I wouldn't be surprised if the twenty-three thousand came from what we actually spent back at that time.
Correct for that.
You'd never replace it for that.
Dick Bulley built that.
Dick, yeah.
Dick Bulley built that when he, he got done working for me, went to work for the town for a few years and went back to work for me. And he died the same day he started back to work for me.
Yeah.
Mark, what number do you wanna put on it?
What number do we wanna put on it?
What do you think it would cost to do a pole barn like?
If you had to rebuild it, it'd be at least probably seventy-five.
Oh, yeah, it'd be a hundred thousand to rebuild.
Hundred thousand.
Easily.
You need the sand shed at ten-six?
Yeah.
Okay. So just add the furniture bin and then change the salt, sand shed.
The sand shed is a guaranteed replacement value thing, though. I mean, we couldn't replace the sand, or the salt shed, I mean, for ten thousand dollars.
That one would be close. Because it's only, what's, six, not even sixteen feet wide, it's fourteen by twenty by twelve. Might be fourteen at the high pitch to the back. We might be able to replace, it might be twenty thousand.
So is it, what is the value of the sand shed now? Like what, what would be the value, they not, how much is it, because that's what they're asking under that.
What's the value of it now?
Right.
Well, that's probably more than covers the value of it now. Eleven thousand, ten, what, ten-six, wasn't it?
No, for the sand shed.
Oh, sand shed? They're not asking replacement value, they're asking value of it as it stands.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's coded GRC, which says replacement cost without regard to the building value limit shown. To me, that's saying we should insure it for what it would cost to replace it.
That's where I got trouble.
Unless I don't understand that correctly.
Yeah.
Without regard to the building value limit. Only appliance to the first.
So if you, if you're reading that, right? Where it says, so it sounds to me like insured for guaranteed replacement value regardless of what the building value is.
Yes.
So we should be putting in what we think the building-
The replacement.
Is, to me, what the building value is, not what it would cost.
Currently?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Okay, I guess I'm-
Because later on, when you look at vehicles, you know, they were, they were talking about the one ton and that same, that same question came up. And she said what, she told me what the vehicle value was now.
Maybe you could just ask for clarification on that.
Yeah. Because I guess I read that a little differently, too. To me, it looked like it was saying, taking in the, the replacement cost without regard to the building value. But maybe I'm just interpreting, so yeah, asking for some clarification.
It is, it is replacement cost without regard.
Okay.
That's what it, it's insured for, that's what you see.
Okay.
They're still asking what the building value was.
The trusses would cost over a hundred thousand, just replace those. That's figured at twenty-five hundred a piece, I know.
Crazy.
It's crazy.
So do we need a motion? Do we need a motion? On this?
Do I hear a motion?
Do we need to do that?
Because we need to approve the VLCT renewing. So we need a motion? Sandy?
Just those two changes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the VLCT passive renewal with changes as noted.
I'll second that.
You second it? I'll figure it's a I.
I.
Bye.
So I have a petition.
Signed by the correct percentage?
Yes, it's over a hundred, I only needed eighty-two. And this petition is asking that they, your decision to take Florence Avenue to a one-way street be taken before the voters on November eighth? That they vote either yes or no for it. And it also says, I'm not sure about this, but there would be an informational meeting on November, November seventh to discuss the proposed changes on that. Do you have a select word meeting that night?
November 7th?
Yes.
So you know if you have a quick meeting first, but... So I was just going to do a half-page ballot, just like Mill River's yes or no. It's going to go in a different box. And at the end of the night, we'll just count them up.
And it'll be available at the polls?
Yes. Or if someone calls in for one, because the general election ballots were mailed out Friday by the Secretary of State's office. I mean, you can vote to send these out to everyone, which would be about $1,000 or so.
I make the motion that we let Julie create a separate ballot for in-person voting on November 8th. And that also to make it available upon request.
I have a question on that though.
Oh, I think I need a second first before we have discussion. Okay.
Motion's been made. Do you accept the petition?
No, it's discussion, I think, right now.
My understanding was the state statute says that when somebody turns in the petition, it has to be done at the next town meeting. Or we vote to hold a special election. Is this any... Is this considered a special election or whatever? It's certainly not the next town meeting.
I talked with the Secretary of State's office. They said this could be presented to the voters that day since we're having an election.
They can, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I think we can now...
Pardon?
I think that was a discussion. I think our discussion...
Yeah, that's all I wanted to know. Whether we were legal or not.
Okay.
Any motion for a petition?
I...
You made it, didn't you?
Yes.
And she seconded it, so we have a motion.
So the motion is... We had our discussion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, another question. Does this mean that we don't do the signs at this point or...
Yeah, no, we can't. It may not be...
Because it's going to be...
I can't hear what you're all saying.
We can't do signs yet because now it's going to go to the voters on the 8th.
We can't do what yet?
We can't make signs for Florence Avenue yet.
Oh, make signs for it?
We can't do that yet. First...
I thought that makes sense.
It's going to go up to the voters.
I didn't know the word signs was that you said. So does this mean that people that send in their ballots don't get to vote on that?
They can request this ballot.
Or come in on November 8th and vote.
Right.
Right. And how will they be notified that there's additional ballot?
Julie can put it in the newsletter.
I'm sorry. I've got my hair in a bit, but I can't hear you.
Julie can put it in the newsletter. The November newsletter will go out late October for everybody to know.
Is that something you put on the Front Page Forum?
It can be put on the Front Page Forum too. Yep. And newsletter on the website.
Facebook?
Um, just to go back to Bruce's question. If, what is this? If the town... If the annual town meeting falls within 60 days from the receipt of the petition, then you can wait till town meeting to hold the vote. If the annual town meeting does not fall within 60 days from the receipt of the petition, the select board must call a special meeting.
Okay.
Errors and omissions. We have one, two, three of them here. The first is David and Roxanne Aubrey. Difference is $9,200. And that would be a reduction. Second is Joshua and Rebecca Holting. Difference is $3,500. There again, it's a reduction. And the third is Erin and Carrie Aubrey. $3,100. And there again, it is a reduction. All three are reductions.
Does anybody know what Kama error means?
I mean, you know Kama is their software program.
Oh, okay.
I do know errors and omissions occurs every year. And normally, it's pretty much down pat.
And it seems like surveys were presented to defend this.
Does somebody want to make a motion on all three? Or do you wish to do all of them individually?
He's got it all as one.
Yeah. I'm making motion to approve and sign all the errors and omissions.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do.
Select Board Concerns and Comments. Other business. Tree Ward and Rob Barker gave the town a price of $100 to remove a limb that fell in West Hill Cemetery. Thankfully, did not damage any headstones. Rob would be willing to remove the limb and tree for $500. There is $59, $61, and $0.89 in the cemetery fund. What's your pleasure? Do you want the tree removed or just the limb?
I would say the tree and the limb.
Take the whole tree?
Yes.
Do I have a motion in the second?
I make a motion that we remove the lemon tree. That we let Rob Barker remove the lemon tree at West Hill Cemetery for $500.
Second.
You also had a letter in there from Stephanie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going for your word. We have a letter from Regional Planning Commission, Stephanie Bore. Sandy goes into a long explanation here. Pretty much sum it up. We're at the next lowest rate. And to get any lower of a rate of our percentage that we pay, we would have to do some serious work on our river scoping. Town Hall front and side door locks are going to be changed October 11th. And she'll be making keys for the appropriate people in our package there of the people authorized to have keys.
So I just got an update from the locksmith this afternoon. I sent it out to Kathy Nelson. He now cannot do that. He has run into a problem with the high-separated lock, so he's not going to do it. So that's the issue.
Okay. Okay.
Also, she's asked the Mill River District to use the gymnasium for the town meeting if we have it rather than buy a phone like we did before. And she has an announcement that Daddy Longlegs will be here Wednesday, October 26th. That's the concert upstairs here at Town Hall. 7:00 PM is the starting time. They usually last about an hour and a half or so. I guess I could say please come because they're worth going to. Alrighty. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.